Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This moment, at this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence in memory of Suzanne Fleming, who was a District 88 employee, as well as extremely involved within the Edison community. And she passed away suddenly. How did we, last Saturday? Yes, last Saturday. And so, if you can just have a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call, please. Here.
Quayre. Finnegan. Stowe. Seeler.
Here.
Dahl.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Okay. At this time, it is the practice of the Board of Education to provide a place on the agenda for unwelcome comments and suggestions from the public. Do we have any cards this evening?
Good evening. At this time, we do not have any comments.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move along to item six, the educational focus item, which is a career pathways update.
Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and steal the screen for a second. So tonight, I just wanted to take a few minutes and showcase to the board the work that we've done with our career pathways and workforce development in the district so far. And as we've discussed in the past, we right now have three different pathways for our students that we're offering. And the first one is the CTE Youth Apprenticeship Program in Manufacturing. We have been growing this program. This is our third year. And what we've done is we work with Project Higher Ed, the DuPage ROE, and a company called GPS Ed Solutions. And this is a partnership that helps place our students into paid apprenticeships during the school day. So it's a two-period release for our students. In the first four to five weeks, while we're finding a placement for them, the students are getting their OSHA certifications. They're learning about resume writing, interview skills. And then GPS helps us to place the students. And the students actually go through the interview process. They get hired, they're paid apprentices. They work about 15 to 20 hours per week. This year, we have five students in manufacturing and three in the IT internships. And they're employed at SWD, Forster Tools, Simplex, and there's a pending placement at Flexco. Also, with Project Higher Ed, they, it's a partnership with COD. And if students qualify, we have three alumni that qualified for full scholarships along with their apprenticeships. We currently, and we had one student that accepted it. So along with the youth apprenticeship, we've added an information technology piece to it. And we have three students that are currently employed at Windalco. And then we had two that are working at Willowbrook High School in our IT department. And so, it's a little bit of a flip because we have a lot of manufacturing workplaces that want our students. And we only have about six to eight students that are doing it. But we have many IT students, and we're having a hard time finding the placements for them. So we are working with, again, GPS Ed Solutions, DuPage, the ROE, and Project Higher to get them some more placements. We have four students that are waiting for a placement for next semester, but it's been very successful so far. And then finally, we have the Ed Teacher Preparation Program. And that is pretty much a student teaching program. It's a dual-credit course with COD. And we're, it's going to start next semester. And students will be going and getting field placement and time in the classrooms. So throughout the year so far, we've had weekly career pathway meetings with our department heads for learning services, for guidance in CTE. And every week, we talk about and we share all the opportunities. And we create opportunities for our students to expand these workforce opportunities. So, so far this year, Addison Trail had a college fair on September 21st. There were over 60 different colleges that the students were able to talk to about their majors and different programs. Also, as a result of these meetings, on September 29th, Addison Trail had an employment and career fair where we had close to 30 different business partners from the area talking about career options and placement opportunities for them. And one last thing that we've already done is that we took about 60 students out to McCormick Place for the International Manufacturing Show. And the students were able to, they saw things like artificial intelligence, augmented reality, virtual reality. And they were able to talk to really cutting-edge and leading manufacturers to try to really attract them into the, into the field. On October 5th, we had a luncheon for local businesses. And these businesses were from Addison, Lombard, Villa Park, and the Oak Brook area. And we featured our Brook Catering Company. And they have opened up their own restaurant called The Willows. And they planned the whole meal for us. And it was really, it was very impressive. We also had the Willowbrook Orchestra, excuse me, the orchestra. And Dr. Barbanetti really shared information about our district and invited those businesses and workplaces to be partners with us as well with helping to place these students. So coming up, we have a field trip to the United Center. ComEd is on October 18th, hosting a Powering Your Career Path Day. And students are going to be able to explore construction, engineering, IT, HR, and finance. And the draw for the United Center is we're going to get tours of the locker room and get pictures with the Michael Jordan statue. So they should be looking forward to that. And then, on October 25th and 26th, we're taking each, 30 students from each of the high schools. We're going to be touring SWD, the Symbol Training Center, and COD's Project Higher Ed. And we've invited students from freshmen all the way out to seniors because we really want to target the younger students so that they can create their path with their coursework and really end up in these courses in their junior and senior year. And then Willowbrook College and Career Center, our College and Career Week will be March 20th to the 24th. Excuse me. Finally, thanks to, you know, the board policies and the school board's support in this, we have introduced some graduation requirement flexibilities where students can, if they're in a vocational or technical program, as well as an apprenticeship, they can waive some of their graduation requirements to be able to participate and to be ready for the next level if they choose to be in any of those programs. And that's it for me for today. Any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate all the thoroughness of that office.
Thank you.
And also, it's amazing, you know, the progress we've made in such a short period of time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have item seven, which are discussion items requiring no action. These items will be considered as part of the consent agenda for the October 31, 2022 meeting, unless otherwise decided by the board. The first is financial reports, a list of bills for September 2022.
Attached for your review is a list of summary of bills, including payroll and vendor transactions for the month of September 2022.
Are there any questions? Okay. Then, item B is a report on the shared services or outsourcing for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022.
Thank you. So presenting the annual report, this will be the 10-year anniversary of this newly required reporting to the board in regards to our shared services and outsourcing. This is something that certainly beyond just the law and its compliance is important, obviously. We've made a commitment for many years. And over that time period, 10 years, we have committed to multiple ways in which we try to bring efficiencies and cost effectiveness on behalf of the Board of Education and the taxpayers. So on page two of that is the actual template or the format that provides the details. This is ultimately something we report through our audit on behalf of the auditors. And then it will be sent to the State Board of Education. And it will also become part of our website publication for our annual audit. So it's important that we at least take a moment to share with the board a number of those initiatives, whether it is cooperatives that we belong to, both the workers' comp and our property casualty liability. We belong to large cooperatives of anywhere from 80 to 200 school districts to get the best purchasing price out of that. And then also, we belong, obviously, to the SASET Cooperative. We work with local other area school districts in regards to bidding. So District 45 has assisted us in bidding out for our waste refuse on that side of town. We work with the Village of Addison on this side of town. We purchase wherever we can through the state of Illinois or through national joint cooperative purchasing entities so that we can get that best pricing. Again, when they have large scale, whether it's, again, within the state or national, they can certainly use much more pressure, if you will, in terms of trying to negotiate those prices on our behalf. And we really do try to use as much of that as we can. We purchase our natural gas through our cooperative. The Illinois Gas Cooperative has a number of school districts and municipalities in this area. So as you can see, there's a number of opportunities. We continue to look for any one of those. But these are the ones that we would be reporting for the fiscal year ending last year, June of 2022.
Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you. Next, move along to the item eight, separate Xams. First one is ISBE School Maintenance Maintenance Grant Program.
Thank you. So we did briefly bring this to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. The state of Illinois is funding another round of matching grants for school facility projects. So we had previously, in each of the years that this has been available to us, applied for and received the grant, all of those previous ones were for roofing. Since we do not have roofing coming up for the summer of '23, we'll be submitting for the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning projects at both schools. And so, asking for the board consideration as we move through the application process, tonight would be that first step, submitting to you the scope of work that we're looking to submit, get approval from the Board of Education, and then we would follow the process in terms of submitting that within the appropriate deadline to the State Board of Education for consideration.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to prepare and submit the application to the Illinois State Board of Education's School Maintenance Program Grant to complete HVAC replacement work in the CTE vocational areas at Addison Trail.
Mr. Olson, second. Any questions or comments? See none, roll call, please.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Dahl.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the purchase of the softball backstop replacement.
Tonight, we are recommending the Board of Education accept the lowest responsive and responsible bid for the replacement of the lower-level softball backstop at Willowbrook from Proline Fencing Company in the amount of $15,982. Work will include removing the existing backstop and replacing the kind. It is in part of the building improvement projects, which was approved last spring and is within the budget estimate. The work is expected to take anywhere from three to four days. And it comes with a one-year warranty on labor and a five-year warranty on materials. We did receive two bids in this bid. However, one of those pricing that we received is not really in line with the budget estimate and/or the project or scope.
I move that the Board of Education approve the acceptance of the lowest responsive and responsible bid submitted by Proline Fencing Company in the amount of $15,982 for the replacement of the lower-level softball backstop at Willowbrook.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Dahl.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item eight, C, the purchase of the garage door replacement.
We recommend the Board of Education accept the lowest responsive and responsible bid for replacing an auto shop garage door at Willowbrook from United Door &amp; Dock in the amount of $10,175. There are currently three garage doors at Willowbrook. This would be the garage door that faces the west or along the back drive. It's approximately 24 feet by 14 feet. It will include a one-year warranty. And again, the estimates that we received are within the budget. We did receive two bids. They are a little tighter this time. But Door &amp; Dock, United Door &amp; Dock, did have the better price.
I move that the Board of Education approve the acceptance of the lowest responsive and responsible bid submitted by United Door &amp; Dock in the amount of $10,175 for replacing an auto shop garage door at Willowbrook.
Second.
Okay, any questions? See none, roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Dahl.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Oh, Donna.
That's okay. We are allowed to do that. Yes. Motion carries. I thought that I missed it. It's okay. This cold weather just kind of freezes all the, you know, makes it hard to think. Now, move on to, motion carries, obviously. And moving on to item eight, D, gymnastics flooring.
We are recommending that the Board of Education reject the bids received for replacing the gymnastics floor at Willowbrook. We did receive only one response from vendors. So we have started our work in contacting those that we received proposals from and figuring out why they did not submit a bid. We are finding that they were just crunched on time. So this bid is back on the street, and we will be looking to open it later this week in hopes that we have a little bit more of a response from vendors.
I move that the Board of Education reject the bids received for replacing the gymnastics floor at Willowbrook as they are not in our best interest at this time.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Dahl.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion carries. Next, move on to item E, Architect Engineer Service Proposal for the Parking Expansion.
I move that the Board of Education accept the proposal from White &amp; Company Civil Engineering Services for the parking lot expansion at Addison Trail and Willowbrook for a combined fee of $16,400 plus reimbursable expenses.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? See none, roll call, please.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Dahl.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item F, the Architect Engineer Service Proposal for the Varsity Softball Field at Willowbrook.
I move that the Board of Education accept the proposal from White &amp; Company Civil Engineering Services for the Varsity Softball Field relocation at Willowbrook for a fee of $8,500 plus reimbursable expenses.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? See none, roll call, please.
Quayre.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Dahl.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item G, a list of bills vendor payments from September 22nd to October 12th, 2022.
I move that the Board of Education approve a list of payments to vendors for the period of September 22nd to October 12th, 2022 in the total amount of $1,030,069.58.
Second.
Any questions, comments? See none, roll call, please.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Dahl.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item H, donations.
I can do it. Okay. Move that, I, I'm sorry. I move that the Board of Education, I move that the Board of Education accept the donations as presented.
Second.
Any, any questions, comments? See none, roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Dahl.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Quayre.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Kane. Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item I, personnel.
In the Villa Park community, but they're a large, you know, 60 by 30, depending on how it's laid out, 60 by 30 or 50 by 50, large fenced-in area, six foot high. And that's where all their equipment is. That's where all the power is, the generators, and what is necessary for the towers to work. They're responsible for all the maintenance, all the upkeep. And we're providing them with 24/7/365 access to that area. All the more reason that it's outside of any of our operating areas. So there's very minimal disruption to anything that would have to do with our operations in terms of their accessing and maintaining that equipment over the term. If there's any damages or things that happen, certainly, these are all over the country. They've had certainly a lot of that in terms of hurricanes or storms or fires. They're responsible for all the repairs and all the upkeep. Nothing falls on the district. The only other piece that falls into that would be maintenance of perhaps the path where they access it, whether it's paved or it's stoned. We're working through some of those details, to be honest with you. We have some preferences. And we're working through the final details before anything would be signed to make sure that it is low maintenance indeed for us and that it would serve the full term and that we wouldn't have issues in terms of rutting, perhaps, or them driving over a path which was constructed, reconstructed, I should say, within the last four years. And it's a walking path. It's not designed for vehicles. So things like that, that we want to make sure we're protected and taken care of and doesn't damage any of our property as they access their facilities. So again, very cooperative, very good to work with. They do this all over the country. And certainly, you know, prefer to work with school districts, as they said many times to us, so. So I'm going to pause there. If there's anything in particular you had tonight, or again, you have time to review this, if anything comes up between now and the 31st, we can certainly, you know, try to address those before that meeting. They are looking to move sooner than later. They'd like to try to get this approved so they can get it slotted for the summer construction window, to be honest. If they miss next summer, it becomes a little more challenging for all parties, is the only thing they've shared. So we're kind of, we've had a lot of negotiations. I think we've reached a good point in which we can bring this to the board. But I did want to put that out there.
I did have a question. I noticed you mentioned that there's a possibility for two additional companies to put there. We still, oh, I understand everything.
Everything's still maintained and everything. But like, let's say there's, this is AT&amp;T. Let's say there's Verizon and Sprint. I think those are still two companies. It's always those still have Sprint.
T-Mobile, yeah.
T-Mobile, okay. So it would be an extra $400 per company. But if, let's say Verizon were to lease both of them, would that still be $800? Or would that, you know what I'm saying? If...
Right now, it reads every additional antenna...
So it's not by company, it's by the antenna?
Yeah, I believe it's every additional antenna.
Okay.
Pause for a moment. So it's considered a co-location rent. So co-location rent for the first or initial sub-leasee shall be AT&amp;T. And they shall pay that initial amount. And then, sub-leases... Yeah, it just says, "Leece shall pay the less-or per month additional rent for each additional sub-lease." So if Verizon was to sign two additional sub-leases to put two antennas, hypothetically, each one of those would qualify as additional sub-lease. Again, why they would want to put two antennas on the same tower for them. Right now, you know, my understanding is there are some in the area that are reaching their end of life. And that is one of the reasons why we were aware of that during our negotiations and made sure that we accounted for that, which was likely to end up on our tower, if we were to agree to this. So that was the intention.
I was just curious, obviously, if we had, we wouldn't have any say over it. But I thought if, if we've got the option of getting the full $800 for the two additional antennas, obviously, that would be ideal, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Move on to school recognition. And we'll go ahead and start with Willowbrook tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Last week, we completed our school-wide fall testing date. All students in grades nine, 10, and 11 participated in practice PSAT exams. We had 409 students in grade nine who took the PSAT 8-9 exam. And 866 students in grades 10 and 11 took the PSAT 10. Students in grades 11 took the exam to be eligible for national merit recognition. And this testing day provided all of our students with a good opportunity to have a practice exam in order to be able to improve upon their skills for the next time they test. um, in order to be able to improve upon their skills for the next time they test. On Wednesday of this week, we'll be hosting our first outstanding student recognition event for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We'll be honoring one student from each department at our event, which will be in room C two, beginning at seven forty-five. We invite all of our board members to join us for our event. Other upcoming events include welcoming the class of twenty-twenty-seven with parent meetings on November third at Jackson Middle School, November seventh at Albright Middle School, November tenth at Jefferson Middle School, and November fifteenth at Willowbrook. We're also offering an optional PSAT eight-nine exam to incoming class of twenty-twenty-seven members on Saturday, November fifth at Willowbrook. In student activities, our student activities groups have been very active with regular meetings and events in the building. Our DECA students participated last week in an area-wide convention on October fourth. And this past weekend, our Model UN students participated in their first competition at Sandberg High School, which was met with great success. In music, last week we opened our twenty-two, twenty-three concert series with our collage concert on Thursday. This event showcased all our musical areas, including orchestra, band, and choir. This week, we invite everyone to join us on Tuesday at seven PM in the auditorium for our choir invitational and again on Thursday at seven PM in the auditorium for our string fest. Both of these concerts are in collaboration with our feeder school music departments. Additionally, this morning, we had choir members who traveled to Springfield in the very early morning hours to open the Illinois Principal Association Annual Conference with the singing of the National Anthem. Our students were invited by the newly inducted president of IPA, who's Mr. Raul Gaston, the principal at Jefferson Middle School, and they performed in collaboration with the Jefferson Middle School choirs. We're also proud to share that, um, with you are many ILMEA all-district musicians for twenty-twenty-two. Please help congratulate these students. Our district is very competitive and these students are performing at the highest level. Lilian Karen, Annika Dahlberg, Annabelle Dini, Eliana Esperanza, Raymond Gahardo, Christopher Garu, Alexandra King, Sarah Cosanda, Nirja Kumar, Lauren Maher, Sophia Marino, Sean Obracta, Kaitlin O'Connor, Anna Sealbox, Samantha Tantilla, Quentin Terzlick, and Amelia Tortoriachi. And in athletics, we'd like to send congratulations to our girls volleyball team for winning the Lincoln Way Central Volleyball Tournament this weekend. The Warriors improved their record to thirty-two and two. All tournament honors were awarded to Kelly and Hannah Kelly. Kelly is also a nominee for the My Suburban Life Athlete of the Week this week, um, and I think voting just wrapped up at seven o'clock tonight. Our girls' flag football team was showcased for their excellence in both performance and pioneering of the sport of flag football on GN Sports on Sunday evening. In cross-country, our girls' team finished fourth place at the conference meet this weekend with Amelia Ojeda and Mia Barrington earning all-conference awards. Amelia finished second and Mia finished eighth. The boys' sophomore team finished first in the West Suburban Gold Championship and the boys' varsity team finished third in the conference with Charlie Hayes and Kevin Dietrich earning all-conference honors. Charlie finished sixteenth and Kevin Dietrick finished first. Girls' tennis came to an end this weekend at the Lions Township Sectional. The Warriors competed very well at sectionals and all season long. And we'd also like to wish best of luck to our athletes who are continuing to compete this week. On Wednesday, our girls' volleyball team is in action against Leiden. This is also senior night for our class of twenty-twenty-three volleyball players. Boys' soccer takes on Conant High School at the IHSA Regional Semifinal this upcoming Wednesday at four thirty PM at Conant High School. The football teams take on Morton this week with freshman A and varsity playing on Thursday and JV and freshman B playing on Saturday. All games will be hosted at Willowbrook. Girls' swimming conference meet is also this weekend. The West Suburban Gold diving finals will be held on Thursday at Leiden and the swimming finals will be held on Friday, October twenty-first at Hinsdale South. And our flag football team competes at the West Suburban Conference Championship Tournament this Friday, October twenty-first at Oak Park River Forest High School. The Warriors will play two games on that evening at five PM and seven PM. And both of our boys' and girls' cross-country teams will run in their sectional competitions this Saturday at Lions Township High School in La Grange.
Thank you. Thank you. And now Edison Trail.
Good evening. We're gonna start with our parent conferences. During the recent, our recent parent teacher conferences, we had ninety percent of attendance, so we had a total of two thousand seven hundred and four conferences. On Wednesday, October twelfth, we held our all-school PSAT testing where thirteen hundred exams were administered, so we had a ninety-two percent attendance rate. Testing went smoothly with the support of all of our staff. Italian Heritage Month has officially kicked off and our Blazer Hall has been beautifully decorated with the colors of the Italian flag. Theater presented Harvey by Mary Chase and it was an overall success with many more freshmen joining us than they have in the past. In athletics, we have boys' golf where the team had three golfers qualify for the IHSA sectional. Congratulations to Frankie Bargus, Zach Morris, and Jack Boltinger. In girls' golf, the team had two golfers qualify for the IHSA sectionals. Congratulations to Ebrielle Provenzino and Jocelyn Ellicat. In girls' tennis, uh, they competed in the West Suburban Conference Gold Tennis Meet and took third place. The team also had a six all-conference players, uh, they had six all-conference players. Jackie Burgante, Julia Russeki, Clarita Gaetan, Kaitlin Trong, Sia Pappas, and Caitlin Liu. And in boys' and girls' cross-country, Addison Trail hosted the West Suburban Conference Gold Cross-Country Meet at St. James Farm in Warrenville. There were over five hundred runners that competed in eight different races throughout the day. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, now are there any board member reports? And superintendent's report.
Good evening. Uh, just two quick, uh, updates tomorrow, uh, tomorrow evening, we have a, uh, a meeting, a workshop, if you will, for prospective board members. Uh, on our website is the link for registration and then, uh, those interested would be sent a Zoom link, uh, to participate in that meeting. Essentially, it is, it just gives you overview of the process, um, and information about, uh, you know, levels of, of commitment, uh, related to our board and, and those, those expectations. So I invite anyone that would be interested to visit the website and register for that meeting tomorrow night at, so it's the October eighteenth, uh, Tuesday night at six thirty. Additionally, on Tuesday night, November first, uh, at seven PM, we will have online our school update meeting for parents. This is, these are the meetings we've been doing since, uh, for the last two years now, uh, centralized from the district office, from, from the superintendent's office to meet, uh, directly with parents to give updates on, uh, information, uh, in here in the district. So again, that is on Zoom, um, and the, the, you, the parents will receive an email, uh, with the registration link for that meeting and then those who register will be sent the Zoom link to participate. It's November first, Tuesday, uh, Tuesday night, November first. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and it's, at this time, um, the board has placed on the agenda for any public comments related to the discussion and or actions of the board on the above agenda items. Do we have any comments this evening?
Good evening. We do not have any comments at this time.
Thank you. Um, next is announcements. The next joint, uh, meeting's gonna be the Joint Board of Education meeting held on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two at five PM. It located at this, uh, Season Fifty-two at Three O'Brook Center in O'Brook, Illinois, six zero five two three. And then the next Board of Education meeting after that, it's gonna be on Monday, October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two at seven thirty PM in the District Boardroom located at the District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Edison, Illinois, six zero one zero one. At this time, I would entertain a motion to move into closed session for, um, purposes of A, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, um, performance or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting or a specific employee and volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony or complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting or a volunteer of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body or to determine its validity. However, meaning to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in course with this act, um, five, uh, compiled statutes, one twenty slash two, C one. B, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. C, security procedures, school building, safety, and security, and the use of personnel and, um, equipment to respond to an actual or threatened, um, or an actual threatened or a reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public or public property pursuant to five, uh, compiled statutes, one twenty slash two, C eight.
So.
Roll call, please.
No? Yes, Wilson?
Yes.
Player?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
King?
Yes, motion's approved and we'll move into closed session.
Okay, we're recommend the open session, roll call please.
Olson.
Here.
Clear. Here. Finnegan. Here. Taylor. Here. Noah. Here. Kane.
Here. After the closed session, there is action that's necessitated by the closed session. I entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Education adopt and approve the 2022-2026 District 88 Building and Grounds SEIU Local Number 73 staff contract.
Second.
Roll call please.
Clear.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Second.
On paper say aye.
Aye.
I'll post an aye.